Mayor, we are recording. Thank you.
All right. Thank you and welcome everyone. My name is Mike Peterson, the mayor of the city of Cottonwood Heights. It's Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. This is our business meeting agenda. And it's just after 7:00 PM. We will begin with a required reading of the determination which allows us to host this meeting online and that determination states pursuant to Utah Code Annotated 524-2074, the city's mayor as the chair of the city council hereby determines that conducting the meeting of the city council on this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at that location. Therefore, we're meeting online. So again, thank you, everyone, and welcome once again. Now begin with a pledge of allegiance and I'm going to ask council member Peterson, would you lead us in that pledge?
Certainly, Mayor. I fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council Peterson. I appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is something we've done each year for the last few years and that's the acknowledgement of some people who do some amazing jobs in beautifying our community and with beautification awards. And so I'll turn over to Mike Johnson for that introduction. Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I really enjoy this. We get to do this each year. You know, it's a little better to be able to hand a certificate or some recognition out in person, but still exciting nonetheless. This is our third or fourth year now of the Landscape Beautification Awards and this is co-sponsored by our city business association. And what it does is we ask for nominations from residents all over the city of their neighbors or friends or people, people that whose houses they've driven by that have a yard that catches their eye, that the landscaping is high quality or beautiful or unique or creative or sustainable or environmentally friendly. And what I like about this is it's citizen-driven, so the nominations come in from members of the public. We then ask each council member to go pick a winner of from the nominee list in their respective districts and the mayor picks a commercial property. And, you know, we're able to provide them with a small token of appreciation and a certificate. And adding to that this year, actually at the suggestion of one of our winners is we're creating some yard signs that say beautification award winner that we're going to distribute to the winners here. So again, we're excited to do that. I will just run by the winners, run through the winners district by district. We've invited each of the winners to join the Zoom meeting tonight. If they're here, Paula's going to add them to the meeting so they can speak. So I'll introduce each district, turn some time over to that respective council member and then if the winner is here, they'll have a minute to answer questions or or speak or whatever as directed by each council member. So I'll start with District 1. I won. And in Council District 1, the winner was the Selander family, Brian and Lindy, and they live off Mystic Meadows Lane. So Council Member Peterson selected this property as the winner. And they've all agreed to have their, the picture of their property displayed here tonight. So you can at least admire through a picture the hard work they've put into their property.
Real quick, there was a number of properties. I actually took a half a day, went around and surveyed just a number of beautiful properties. All of us know, especially this year, it takes a lot of work to try to keep up with the weeds and the different maintenance that we have to do, but this one particularly really stood out, just a beautiful job, well done. But there are a number of honorable mentions I'd like to go by and talk to as well.
Right. And it looks like the Seanders are not with us tonight. We will get a certificate delivered to their houses. Council District 2 is Chris Owens on Silver Fork Drive. You can see a picture of his property here and interestingly enough, Chris is also one of our newest members of the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee. So I think he picked the right committee to join and want to recognize him for the hard work on his yard.
I note that he is in the attendees list, Paula, maybe if you want to bring him in.
Yes, I have. I have allowed him to speak.
This one, there are always a couple of different looks and takes this. Some people take care of their yards for decades and they've always looked good and they get nominated regularly and and that is a good thing. In fact, last year's was a, one of, was someone who'd been nominated time after time. This particular one was, not only because it was a lot of work and it looks great, but a lot of the comments from the nominateors were the change that it brought to the neighborhood from what it had been before the Owen, before Chris got a hold of it and transformed it really. And that is also a very admirable achievement to have a change that the neighborhood appreciates and will, you know, take the time to recognize.
I also like the fact that it's water-wise. That's really impressive.
And be friendly. Chris, are you here? Is there anything you'd like to say?
I'm here. Thank you very much. I appreciate the positive comments and Mike, thank you as well for recognizing the water-wise. That's what I'm most proud of. You'll note there's not a blade of grass anywhere on here, so I'm not watering lawn here. It's all xeriscate. It's all drip lines going to individual low water plants. And it still looks great. So I'm very proud of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, again, congratulations and we appreciate those efforts and make us all look good in our city, but.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. All right, Mike, next.
Yeah, Council District 3 is Tamara Feenstra and Benjamin Hall and they live off 6525 South. And they've got this really, this very natural, pretty kind of native landscape going on in their yard. And this was selected as the District 3 winner.
So I'll tell you, Mike, this was really hard for me this year. There were some incredible yards to choose from. But these guys, their use of water, the combination of the colors, the happy bumblebees. It was very impressive. It wraps all the way around their property and it was stunningly, stunningly beautiful.
Great. It doesn't look like they're with us tonight, so we'll get their recognition delivered to them.
That is beautiful.
Council District 4 was Mary Lee Christensen and Larry Larson and they're up off of Timberline Drive. Turn some time over to Council Member Michael on this one.
I know this house well.
I think that, well, the mayor and I spent probably about an hour with Mary Lee and Larry and what you don't see is, are the gardens behind the wall and then the gardens in the backyard as well. And Mary Lee does a tremendous job. I would say maybe the only reason why her grass is not green everywhere might be from the the random dogs that might be off-leash taking, taking, you know, relieving themselves, but she's, she does a fabulous job and plants a lot of annuals every year and I think takes great care of her home, but also was really the spearhead in trying to make a change at Ferguson Canyon. So she's not only she only, she cares deeply about her property, but she also cares deeply about her neighbors. And I think that her her property is a reflection of both those things that are important to her.
And I think her husband too, Larry, goes, walks on the hillside and removes obnoxious weeds too, I think, if I remember correctly.
That's right. Like that's, you have a great memory, Mayor.
All right. I don't believe they're with us tonight either. I think they did confirm that they wouldn't be here. And then finally, the commercial property, a commercial property that's selected by the mayor. We don't usually get as many nominees on this, but we're glad when they do come in. This year's winner was VCA Willow Creek, which was the Willow Creek pet hospital right off of Highland and Creek Road. This is a big property. It's hard to get a picture that does the full thing justice, but, but go ahead, Mayor.
Well, I've enjoyed both being a council member years ago and doing the residential and the last couple of years doing the commercial and and we have a real good mix in our commercial businesses, both in those who are water-wise with zero escapes. And I would select one of those last year. This year I I chose one that I was probably my honorable mention last year, which is the Willow Creek Pet Facility Veterinary Hospital on Creek Road and just off Highland. It's just well manicured and though there are grasses, it's minimal and it's got a combination of zero scrape, low water-wise plants as well as some greenery. So it's just a good representation of of appropriate landscape for an environment that we live in. So I'm glad to recognize Willow Creek Pet Center. Yeah. So Mike, thanks for your effort with the staff doing that. And I really like the idea of getting a signings that they can put on our homes if they desire.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is our citizen comment period. As we introduced last, our last meeting, it ordinance allows up to one hour, so we'll allow up to one hour again this evening. We'll allow each guest up to two minutes and Tim, if you'll just kind of raise your hand when that two-minute time period is up and I'll try to be diplomatic and let him finish the sentence, but ask him to to stop so that we can be consistent with all of our guests. So and also, Tim, I assume that if somebody has given us something in writing, we'll still add that to the minutes?
Yes, and I don't have any written comments tonight for the record.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Paula, let's turn it over to you and our first speaker. And if you'd please tell us your name and where you're from and for the record, thank you.
I need someone, I need someone to raise their hand if they want to speak. Please. I have Kelly Jones.
Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very happy to be before you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. If you recognize me, I've been there to speak before you not too long ago about the Equal Rights Amendment and women's full equality under the law. After that meeting, I went out in the hallway and was greeted by your police chief, Mr. Russo. He told me that he supported the ERA and women because of his daughter. And we took a picture together and I was really happy to do that. We need awesome male allies as women. I came upon that picture recently, but I felt really differently looking at it. Knowing what I know now about Mr. Russo and his harassment of Councilwoman Tally Bruce. As a woman, I know what it is to feel intimidated and silenced. Most women do. It's sadly part of being a woman. I know how it feels to be afraid going out to your car to have someone stand too close and intimidate you. And I know what it feels like to be followed home. It's a very frightening feeling. Councilwoman Bruce has stood up for those in your city who feel they do not have a voice. Will you hear what they feel, what their experience of your city and their interactions with police have been? I ask you to do so tonight. If Tally Bruce is silenced and there are efforts underway right now to do so, who will speak for these members of your community? I ask you to listen and I ask you to speak for them. I call on you to do some specific things. Please end this intimidation of your councilwoman. Speak out firmly and put a stop to the blatant misogyny at work here. Stand with her. We talk a little bit right now about bystander police officers and how important it is for them to speak up when they see something that is not right. And I ask you not to be bystander council members. When you see this kind of behavior happening, I ask you to stand up and be counted and speak out against it. I have five minutes.
No, that means you're timed out.
Please also, please also send a strong message to the militia groups that have been attending your events. I was at two of the events for Black Lives Matter and I watched as militia fully armed with metal bats surrounded peaceful protesters right in front of your city hall. I was there as a peaceful protester and I was dismayed to see that that kind of behavior was allowed and even somewhat championed. And I would ask you to speak out and let them know that that kind of intimidation will not be tolerated.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Paula, next?
I don't have any raised hands at the moment.
I know someone texted me that said they definitely planned on doing it just a second ago, so.
I have, I have Gabrielle Nacy.
Gabrielle?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. To start out, I'd like to say that the residents and I demand that these charges the attendees of the march on Sunday, August 2nd, be dropped. They are completely unfounded as there are multiple videos showing the police officer showing up to aggravate and intimidate the completely peaceful march. The, the next day, the Cottonwood Heights Police Department have been seen interacting and joking with the militia that Kelly just spoke of on middle school, on the middle school property in full armor gear, which is a felony, but they arrested us for standing in the streets that we were trapped on by them. This is clearly another attempt to attack and silence Councilwoman Tally Bruce for personal reasons. This new charge against her is just another reason why I believe Chief Russo should be placed on unpaid administrative leave immediately. Political repression in this city is continually getting worse and worse as most of the city representatives are remaining silent as they watch these atrocities unfold. Also, finally, the deep-seated corrupt corruption of the CHPD is also seen on their Facebook page, incredibly unprofessional. A few times I have interacted with them, they belittled me, wouldn't answer my questions and made it very clear that they were against rallies held at city hall asking for reform. That's all I have to say.
Gabrielle, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Paula, next?
I have Karma Fry.
Karma, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name's Karma Fry. I've been a Cottonwood Heights resident for 16 years. I was also at the protest a few Sundays ago and there have been the meeting I attended that week right after, a lot of things were said that were, there was a lot of misinformation. So I just want to talk about a couple of things to really clarify for anyone who's listening. So we, we were following the law. We're very aware of the law as we protest. This specific protest in particular that happens every week. And the statute states that when groups of 10 or more are protesting and are in a moving, moving protest, they can be anywhere on public property. So the street is public property. And so while some neighbors might not be comfortable with our protesting, that is actually irrelevant because it is a constitutional right. And so police are required to protect protesters. And this is what the police in all other nine neighborhoods that we've marched in have done. And so the concept of public safety and the police being here to keep the public safe is in question right now. As the frequent police killings are being brought to attention and as a resident of Cottonwood Heights, I have deep concerns about our police officers after the information has come out about the police killing of Zane James and how that investigation was inappropriately handled. And the way that the police responded to our police full protest has made me as a resident feel incredibly unsafe. They broke bones.
They broke bones.
Multiple bones of protesters on that day. I am personally terrified. I'm terrified to be speaking up right now. I was terrified that my name was put in the newspaper. Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw you waving. I didn't see the screen. Are you, are you signaling me that I'm, my time's up?
Well, go ahead. Finish your comment. That's, yeah.
Yeah, I just really want to express that as we see Tally being targeted, other community members like myself are incredibly afraid. I have a Black Lives Matter sticker on my car and not only am I afraid of being targeted by the Cottonwood Heights Police Department, I'm afraid that they would not protect me from the militia members who were at the rallies, who have a Facebook page that was shut down because they were inciting violence. And I saw that Facebook page and it was incredibly disturbing. And the way that the police buddy buddied with the people holding AK-47s just makes me really afraid of, to be a community member in Cottonwood Heights.
All right. Thank you, Karma. Appreciate your comments. Paula, next?
I have Aiden Lee.
Go ahead, Aiden. Just.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Your city is not safe. My first visit to Cottonwood Heights was August 2nd and that showed me. At first, it appeared to be a problem with your emotionally unstable and barbaric police department. But once you had the evidence in your hands, you chose to do nothing. And this situation has become apparently much more dire. You, Manager Tingi and Mayor Peterson are protecting white supremacy and hate within your police department? Allowing greeting residents and members of your council to be beaten in the streets by your officers? How dare you? You've allowed armed hate groups of militia to be deputized by your police and on school grounds. How dare you? You have allowed your police and city to harass, intimidate and assault a female councilwoman. How dare you? At first, I thought you might do the right thing and fire Chief Russo and involved officers, as well as apologize for the trauma that you have caused to your community. But at this point, you have made it clear that you are a tax-funded white supremacy hate group hiding under the veil of municipality known as Cottonwood Heights. It took me less than two weeks to dig up an abortive history of corruption, sexual assault, dirty drug histories and extreme violence of the white supremacy roots within your town. Beginning with the dirtiest of them all, Colomar. He and Russo appear to have you all by the balls and protecting this hate, violence and corruption by trying to distract through their endless bullshit lawsuits and petitions. Your taxpayers will know how filthy your abuse of their money is. Your dirty secret is out. This behavior will not be tolerated. I call for immediate resignation of Tim Tingi, Mayor Peterson and Chief Scumbag Russo, as well as the entire police department. I call for an investigation that will lead to your eventual unincorporation and certain criminal conviction. Your residents do not need you. In fact, they are a threat to your society. Thank you.
Thank you, Aiden. Tim, all right. Paula, who's next?
I have Raven James.
Welcome, Raven.
Thank you. I want to start off by stating my disappointment in the charges that were filed today against protesters, the city mayor, city council, city council members, the city manager had an opportunity to prevent this from happening. They also had the opportunity to prevent the alarming response by the CHPD to peaceful marchers on August 2nd. Our family is shocked that Councilwoman Bruce has been vilified openly by other members of the city. As for her courage to stand up against this type of behavior and her position to back equality and ending police brutality, not just in her district, but in general, the fight against police brutality has hit us in Cottonwood Heights close to home, not just with the peaceful protests that turned violent on August 2nd. This behavior is a pattern of intimidation and abuse of power, which leads me into my, expressing my shock that City Manager Tingi, who Police Chief Russo reports to, allowed armed plainclothes officers driving unmarked cars with no license plate to canvass our neighborhood, requesting statements against the March of August 2nd, 2020. And telling residents they would back to collect those statements. Not only is this behavior intimidating, but Cottonwood Heights officers are, were only taking statements of those against the peaceful protest. The issue of using intimidation is not new for Cottonwood Heights officers. We have experienced this as a family and heard from countless constituents that your police force, led by Police Chief Russo, have used these tactics to harass and drain people of their personal, of their personal safety and quality of life. This is just another example of intimidation and bullying that is allowed and encouraged under tyrannical reign of the CHPD. We have heard from mothers who have had to watch their sons being victimized and falsely accused, only to drop the charges once the evidence is requested by pricey lawyers. To Cottonwood Heights Police releasing a slew of media reports to slander and to face individuals that were suspects in a crime. The clearest example of this is with my youngest brother, Zane James, who was shot twice in the back. Cottonwood Heights claimed he had a violent criminal history, but never released the fact that he was not convicted of the alleged armed robberies that the evidence had, they had against him, including the handprint of the actual robber, did not match his own handprint. We need to drop the charges that were placed on the victims of the brutal police attack that took place on August 2nd until we had, we can have an independent third-party review. While I understand you have allowed an appearance of a just investigation to take place thus far, I am suspicious and wary of the connection that is shared between CHPD and the individuals doing the investigation. This is a one-sided investigation that automatically places the actions of the officers involved in harassing and brutalizing peaceful protesters while omitting the complaints and eyewitness reports of protesters and our pro protester, pro protester neighbors.
All right. Thank you, Raven. We thank you. You're, well, you let you go a little bit over, but appreciate your comments. Paula, who's next?
Margarita Cimini.
Margarita, welcome.
Hi, hi, hi. Thank you so much for taking my comments. I just wanted to dial in. I am a former resident of Cottonwood Heights. I was there for 10 years. I can't tell you how many times my family has been harassed by the CHPD. Now, mind you, my family's not perfect, but they told the leader of the Black Lives Matter movement that they had been to my house 85 times. That is crazy. And just so you know, I wanted to report this, but the Cottonwood Heights Police Department's Facebook page had posted some charges against, that were against Tally, Councilwoman Tally Bruce and three other individuals that were part of the, the August 2nd event. And no one else seems to be able to access this Facebook page. Apparently, it's, it looks like you have to be invited by whoever runs this page. This is a violation of the Utah Public's Meeting Act. And if anything, if this is not a true page of this Cottonwood Heights Police Department, it needs to be taken down because they're in violation of this act. But if we would have, if you guys would have handled this appropriately from the very beginning, this, this protest, this, this dance march that happened would have been long gone and out of forgotten and gone from our minds. But because of the way that the police handled this situation so grossly inappropriately, you guys, Cottonwood Heights is now a national target. You have been mentioned in the Washington Post. You've been mentioned in plenty of media circuits. And this is not a good image for Cottonwood Heights. I give props to those who have great relationships to those who have great. But there are a lot of people who don't have a great relationship and they should be given an opportunity to air their grievances and protected and supported by the mayor of Cottonwood Heights, the city manager and the other Cottonwood Heights council members who have not said anything about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Margarita. Paula, next?
I don't have any hands raised. Okay, I have Erin James.
Welcome, Erin.
All right. How about that? Everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you now, Erin. Go ahead. We can hear you now, Erin. Go ahead.
Yeah, you guys are getting your butts kicked tonight. I'd like to think the very first speaker, Kelly Jones, man, she came right out of the gate. We got to stop the intimidation, guys. City council members, mayor, Police Chief Russo. I mean, I think it's time to have an honest dialogue. And I certainly thank you guys for opening up something like this so we can all take a minute to speak. I first start off with a pattern that we see all too often in Cottonwood Heights, and that's a single-sided collection of evidence that supports nothing but CHPD position. I think some of people brought it up with the police made an effort to canvass a neighborhood in their unmarked cars and plainclothes officers knocking on doors, collecting, you know, statements from neighbors that were angry. Of course, they were angry. You know, this is a path that we've seen time and time again. And the only thing that my family can do about it is hire someone to find evidence that contradicts what the CHPD has done. Our family has done this two times to you guys. And here we go again. Here we go again. And I'll say that, you know, to say that arresting the marchers just to drop the charges is just putting undue burden on citizens. I mean, the fact that there's no officer charges is just a miscarriage of justice of what happened on August 2nd. But I know why. I know why. Because if you would have charged an officer on August 2nd, you couldn't have charged anyone else. But there's ample footage of people out there with batons and tasers knocking people down on the sidewalk, filming what was going on. Happy to see their charges are dropped. I'm also happy to see the overwhelming amount of video evidence. You know, my son Zane wasn't so lucky in 2018, the case of the missing video. It exhausts me. My ask is, how much did this cost? How much did this cost Cottonwood Heights when every single municipality swarmed down on the marchers with squirt guns? You guys have ignored my family's request three times. It's time to take action. It's time to address the abuses of power. It's time to develop some policies and training that actually have teeth, some accountability that has teeth, measures that are equal to all citizens.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate your comments.
I don't have any raised hands at the moment. I have Tracy LeFelt.
Welcome, Tracy. Go ahead.
I would like to say, you know, I'm grateful that some of the charges against protesters were dropped. However, all of them should have been dropped. And I second what Erin James said, that police officers should have been charged. There's so much video evidence of wrongdoing, of assault by police officers, of protesters standing on sidewalks filming. And it's intimidation. It is an assault on the First Amendment. There were physical assaults on people resulting in and all of this should not have happened. It all happened because of wrongdoing in the Zane James investigation, in the Zane James shooting, in the Zane James cover-up, and the dissatisfaction with people bringing light to that. And all of you who haven't spoken out against it are complicit in it. And it's taking way too long for you to say the right thing, to stand up for the right thing. So I don't know what you're waiting for. I spoke, I think, two weeks ago, wondering what you're waiting for. But it's high time you did something about silencing people who speak out for what's right and beating people who speak out for what's right and shooting possibly completely innocent people in the back and then suppressing evidence. And you need to investigate this or you are complicit. I think this is very bad for Cottonwood Heights, for property values, and for the safety of people in Cottonwood Heights. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next, Paula.
I don't have any raised hands. I have Kimmy Stojak.
Go ahead, Kimmy.
Thank you. Hey, I've got a couple of concerns, Tim. One of them is being, I know there was an email sent back to you in July, July 21st, and I'm wondering if it has been investigated in with the police department that did a no-knock warrant on one of our citizens back in April of 2019, where they put him in a horse collar tackle with a knee in his back, AR-15 to the back of his head for 20 minutes, kicked in the door, although it was unlocked. The rear sliding door smashed because that's protocol. Was a no-knock warrant, was laughed at by the officers, even threatened. For two hours, he sat and listened to officers rip up his carpet, put holes in the walls, tear out lighting fixtures, and destroy his home. They found nothing in his home, no ticket, not even a warning, no names on a warrant. Then he was threatened if he went to Cottonwood Heights for reimbursement. The DEA officer stood next to him and because he was afraid Cottonwood Heights was going to hurt him. And he also made the comment that they screwed the pooch on this one. Where's the body cameras for all this stuff? It is very important for body cameras to be worn at all times when you are on duty, period. If you have nothing to hide, you don't have a problem having it on. First time you don't put it on, you get reprimanded. Second time you don't get put it on, you get fired.
Thank you, Kimmy. Appreciate your comments. Paula, next.
I don't have any raised hands.
Okay, we'll give it just a couple of seconds and we'll move on.
I have Chanel Stewart, I think.
Chanel Stewart? Go ahead.
Yes, you pronounce it right.
I just want to second what everyone else has said tonight in the comments. As many others have said, how much has this police department cost our city in something that could have been prevented to keep our citizens safe? I also call for Chief Russo to be suspended without pay while we investigate his department. And that's just my comments tonight. I want to second what everyone else has said.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Paula, next.
I don't have any new speakers, mayor. Aiden Lee is raising her hand again, but she was already given her three minutes.
No, she's given two minutes, so that's all we're going to allow. Thank you. Anyone who has not spoken who would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand or let Paula know. All right, I think that's everyone. We appreciate those comments. We know these are emotional times and there's a lot of misinformation on, and we understand that. That's why we use outside involvement. The District Attorney's Office obviously is heavily involved in looking at certain particulars with respect to the incident on August 2nd, as well as the Attorney General's Office also gives an outside perspective. And as we went through as a city a couple of weeks back, we went through and became educated on what our training protocols are, which seemed quite thorough and addressed many of those things raised. We'll continue in coming weeks, looking at a variety of other police reform issues. Each of the council members have been asked to submit topics that there will be review and moving forward. But no matter what we do, I'm sure there'll be more questions and we'll continue to work as a council to do the right thing, and that will be our effort. I think that's the end of the public comment period. We'll now move to our
I'm sorry, mayor, may I interject?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Christine.
I just wanted, I don't know if everybody on the council is aware, but if you click your participant button on the bottom, it'll list the panelists and then the attendees. And that will show you who's listening and who has their hands up. So for instance, tonight, there's 22 people in attendance. And if everybody were to have been given three minutes, we still would have been at about 60 minutes. And I feel like that we as a council should be flexible as we're hearing public comments. And if the number of attendees is at 22, I think we should go back to our three-minute amount of time per speaker. Just seems like the right thing to do. So I just wanted to point that out and mention it as something we could talk about.
Thank you, Christine. I concur 100%. I mean, these people have carved out time out of their schedule and made the effort to pre-register before 5 o'clock and jump through all the hoops. I think you're spot on. We should accommodate the group.
I don't have any opposition of doing that. That's why I brought it up at the beginning to see if everyone agreed, and everyone agreed. And if I remember last meeting, Tally, when we said two minutes, you agreed on a last meeting, two minutes. So if we want to go back to three next time, we can go back to three. I'm open to whatever the consensus is of the council.
Yeah, I like Christine's idea. Let's adjust according to the group size.
Yeah, because I asked Paula before and we had 20 an hour or so before, and so we thought it would be close. But next
It may be a matter of not all, as a regular meeting, not all that are there may speak. And so, I mean, you know, we're 15 minutes early. That would have been probably fine tonight.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the standard is the three minutes. And if we can allow three, I think that's what we've always tried to do. And I think along with that, too, when we say three minutes, if somebody is representing a group of whatever, they can have up to five minutes as long as they introduce themselves and represent that group. So our next meeting, I'll bring that up again to see what the council's position is at that time and go that direction. Any further comments?
I guess I have a second one. I think it would be helpful just because City Manager Tingi illuminated a little bit more of the process related to the investigation. I don't know if you're allowed to bring that up.
Yeah.
City Manager Tingi, but it was really helpful for me to understand the process. If there's somebody out there who was at the event who would like to comment or share their perspective, how you do that. Because I wasn't really clear until today, and I'm on the council and I probably shouldn't be. And so if I don't know, perhaps others don't know as well. I don't know if we're allowed to bring that up at this point, but it seems useful.
Tim, you want to address that?
We're still working on that. And so I'll get a communication out to the council on how we're going to facilitate that process. It's not formalized at this point, but we want to be able to make sure we have people to provide evidence if they have firsthand accounts. And we're working on that, and I'll provide that information to you when I'm ready.
Two quick points.
Sorry, sorry, Tally, just to follow. I understand that perspective, Tim. I just worry that it's now September 1st. We're almost a month out. I think we all want the facts to guide us. And I worry that the more time that goes on that people aren't able to provide their firsthand account, the less accurate perhaps it might be. That's all I'm just saying. Time sometimes changes perspectives.
That's the first of my two points. I would say time is of the essence with gathering these people's stories and their firsthand accounts. I think we probably put ourselves at a legal jeopardy by neglecting to do so. And my second question is, I believe staff is under direction from the council to follow up with individuals who bring up things during public comment. And I don't know if we've let that slip since COVID. But I've heard from people that they aren't necessarily getting followed up with. And so I just wanted to make sure we're still in agreement on that.
So I take notes and I follow up when there's questions. I don't follow up when there's comments that are made. I don't talk to everyone when they make comments. I follow up with the questions that have occurred, and that's happened every time that I've been here, since I've been here.
That's my understanding. If there's questions, that Tim takes note. Therefore, we don't get into a dialogue with each and every one, but take notes and we'll follow up. And most of them are clearly comments. But I think with the investigation, again, you know, that's why we agree. This is a new experience for us as a city to deal with something that we experienced on August 2nd. That's why you have the District Attorney's Office involved. That's why we have outside prosecutors involved. That's why we met with Attorney General's Office, that they assigned four investigators to look at in detail the incident and the happenings and interview people both who on both sides of the fence, so to speak. So with respect to Christine's comments, I think it's, I think from the professional perspective of the Attorney General's Office, I was impressed with how much resources they're putting into getting all the facts. But if there's more facts out there that they're not getting, then as Tim suggests, there'll be a mechanism to add that. Then also too, once that report comes back to the city, if we feel that it's not adequate for what we want to know going forward, then we can look at more things. But I think it's pretty clear among the council, there's a division of experience and position. And that's why it's a council and it's going to be a challenge going forward. But just trying to do what's right, get all the facts that we can to help make that judgment. But I'm concerned about, you know, a city that's being looked at through a magnifying glass that hopefully will help us become better in the long run, moving forward. But also, we have a lot of great employees, both in police officers or in planning or in public works or in fire, that are getting a lot of negative feedback as well, and it's tough on them. So hopefully, we can get through this quickly and get back on track of healing as a city and continue to do the right thing and look at all the issues we're facing in the city, and not just the police issues. But
Staff is not alone in taking abuse and critical feedback. There was one point I wanted to follow up with on Tim. If it's ambiguous as to whether it's a comment or a question, like we had, the comment was made that CHPD is operating a Facebook group that appears to be private, that you have to gain admittance before you can make a comment. Will that person get follow-up? And are we breaking open access laws as they refer to?
We don't have a private Facebook group.
Why are people unable to comment on that?
We'll let Tim look into that, okay? I think that's a valid point that we can
It also opens that gap. We never did complete our social media policy when it comes to policing. Do you have anything to write in, Tim?
Tally, I think that's on the list, too, of the council members when we submit lists to review. That's on this. I put it on there myself, so.
It's been months, I think.
Yeah, we'll look at that. Okay, and I never meant to say it was only employees and staff that are taking some of the negative things. Obviously, I've definitely got my share, several hundred, so, yeah, we're all happy to deal with it. But I think it's still for everyone to find a way, find a path to get past it so we can focus on the many, many other important issues within our city. Okay, so that's my point.
Just a reminder, peace is not the absence of tension. Peace is the presence of justice.
I think what we need to do too, now that the charges are filed, is everybody will have an opportunity to look at body cams and come to their conclusion, because I know a lot of that has been withheld or the videos that were taken were doctored to a point. And so I think everyone will have an opportunity to come to different conclusions of what really went on.
Tim, you did mention those body cams were getting released to the media. Has that occurred? Will they be on the 10 o'clock news?
That has occurred.
It has. And I know our officers alleged that several body cams were stolen. How did the count end up?
I don't have that information now. I don't. I didn't think this was going to be a topic at this point, so.
Well, these are things too that the council can, in your individual meetings with Tim, you can get that and hopefully with the public comment period and a few comments that have made it, we can move forward. All right, with that being said, we have some staff quarterly reports. I'm going to turn over to Scott on budget and revenue.
Okay, I wanted to just update you. Mine's not really a quarterly report, just update you on the year-end. We were outstanding, the June sales tax figures from our last meeting when we talked about projected year-ends. So I wanted to pull this up. So if everyone can see this, this is our sales tax. This is our through-June numbers. So our budget was six million, three hundred and fifty thousand. We had projected to go to six million, three hundred thousand. We actually ended up with six million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand. So that's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand ahead of what we received in 2019. About three hundred and seventy thousand ahead of our, our budget. So very surprising to us. We had received in April five hundred and four thousand, and in May, five hundred and twenty-five thousand. We thought we'd probably receive around five hundred thousand in June, and it ended up being six hundred and sixty-two thousand. So a lot more than what we were initially planning when COVID first hit, and a lot more than even we thought we would get in June. For our transportation sales tax, we had projected this number to be about five hundred and seventy-five thousand. We ended up getting five hundred and eighty-six thousand. So that ended up being a pretty good year for us there, or a pretty good number for us there. All in all, taking into account these two items, I just quickly updated where we are. We had initially thought that we would end the year with about two million available for appropriation. It, for the next budget year, we're actually ending up about three million available for appropriation. That's about nine hundred and fifty thousand better than what we thought it would be. It's a combination of revenues being up about seven hundred and fifty thousand, and expenses better, lesser than what we had anticipated by about two hundred thousand. Lots of that's due to our directors trying to under-expend things that they could in the last three months of the year as we were closing the year out. So basically, you know, things turned out about almost a million dollars better than what we thought they would be. Now, this, these are un-audited.
Could you zoom in on that just a little bit, Scott, please?
Let me pull it up a little higher here. So basically, things ended up about nine hundred and fifty thousand better. Now, one note is this is an un-audited number. There are still some things trickling in. The expense numbers held the same since our last meeting that we had, and the revenue numbers did go up a little bit. I'm not specifically aware of any other things that will come in, but usually when we're going through, doing our final numbers, and as we review things with our external auditor, something inevitably comes up that might change it a little bit, but I don't anticipate it to change a lot at this point in time, in terms of where we project to end the year in terms of our fund balance. But one thing to note, I want to go back here to this. We received six million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand of sales taxes. We did not really experience a slowdown per se in sales taxes. We had budgeted six million, three hundred and fifty, which was very close to what we received in 2019. Our budget for 2021 is about five million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. I think that's extremely low based on what we're seeing. I would probably expect it to be in the realm of maybe, I don't think we're going to see tons of growth, but I don't necessarily think we're going to see a big erosion of our sales taxes. So I would say we'll probably be between six million, five hundred thousand, six million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere in that range for our sales taxes. In the next few months, we'll see if we can't update what our real projection would be and come back with some, something that we can give you to give you an idea of where we think it will go. We'll probably give you maybe three levels, a most likely, and maybe a little bit of a pessimistic and a little bit of an optimistic range, so that you can look at that and see what you think in terms of any adjustments that we may want to make as we progress through into the, the budget year that we're in right now. I think that's all that I have.
Any questions of Scott regarding the budget revenue review and update?
Well, that's actually some very, very good news. That, that, surprising, but cautiously optimistic.
Yeah. With that cautious optimism, Tim, is, is there a plan, I think you've said in October to revisit? I think we, I think we committed to everyone that we would come back the end of, by January to look at the impacts of this for some things that we put on hold.
Yeah, we're, we're, our plan is to bring forward to the council the compensation study and have you evaluate that in October. As these projections keep going, we talked about looking at that, and that's our plan, is to bring that forward. The compensation study and, and having the council weigh in on that with possible implementation decisions coming up.
All right, thank you. Any further comments, Christine? Go ahead.
I, Scott, great, great job, and Tim, great job. I think being able to hold costs down in uncertain times, and all, Matt Schiff and everybody, all the department heads, Chief Russo, is, is a, is a big deal. I mean, a really big deal. I know Scott and Councilmember Rakin and I had different perspectives. He was more, he was right, but I was probably dead wrong, but I thought we were in a world of hurt, so that's great. Councilmember Peterson, I think, asked a question the last time, which I maybe wonder if we couldn't see more data, but I think his question was related to revenues and where most of our revenues come from. It seems like most of our revenues maybe come from, or sales taxes come from grocery or Home Depot or whatever it is. It'd be nice to just really understand where, where those dollars come from, and, and because I'd like to just feel really good before we go and talk about compensation, that we're going to see that same trajectory in the future. But if we have some data that can evaluate, okay, where, where, where's the greatest growth coming from? Because it seems to me that many people are staying, are not traveling to work, so they're purchasing, they're using their dollars in Cottonwood Heights rather than working in Salt Lake and maybe going to a grocery store there. I don't know what, I don't know what it is, but it'd be nice to know that, because I think we're going to be in this situation for another year.
Well, I think tied to that, too, as well, Scott said last meeting, too, is, is that, yeah, are we unique, or is that the trend with all the cities? And I think what we said last time, surprisingly, a lot of the cities have, have had the same luck as we have.
If you don't have a ski resort, you're doing okay.
Yeah.
And Chris, and, and Councilmember Michael, I was more optimistic than you were, but I was not this optimistic by a long shot. This is, it's a happy surprise, but you're right, we need to be careful moving forward, but at the same time, we should be judicious and fair to, to our taxpayers and our, and our employees.
But any data that we can have that validates that, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing, so good suggestion. Doug?
I, I totally agree. I, I talked to Scott about this a little bit afterward, and he said in certain segments, you can gather certain information, but it would be nice to fine-tune that if there is a way, because we don't know what's going to happen through January, obviously, but these numbers are a surprise to everyone, but will they sustain theirself, I guess, is the question. I know there's been a fair amount of stimulus money thrown in, and, and our stores have done really well, and different segments have done really well. And hopefully we can continue to sustain this. This is much, much better than we looked at in February, March, April. Just amazing.
I'd love to know what just the on, online sales impact has been, because I know my house, we've done three times much online as we've done at a store, yeah.
That's got to be part of it, definitely.
Is that a reportable number, Scott or Tim? I mean, there, I know that there's only so much detail that we can go into when we're discussing sales tax because of the law, but is the sales, is the sales tax distribution from the state broken out?
Yeah, there's some numbers, and I can get you some more data, but online sales are up in the teens. I think it's in the higher teens area in terms of growth. And then home centers and grocery is both up, not in the teens, I don't think, but in, in the high single digits area. But I can get a little bit better data on that in terms of Salt Lake County and, and our city, so I can bring that.
We can't get too, we can't get too specific as, as stated in law. There's some law requirements where we can't get way into the, the detail of the numbers, but we can provide some, some more input, as Scott has said, that will help you, I think.
Right. If we only have one hotel and we're reporting hotel tax separately, it kind of identifies who it is, and that's, I know that you can't do that, but, yeah, any detail that we could have, I think, would be fabulous.
Yeah, specific to Christine's point, if we're going to look at compensation and things going forward, we want to be able to be able to substantiate the position of support for those revenues to continue, yeah. Any further comments? Thank you, Scott. Appreciate your work on that. Let's move ahead to the next item on our agenda, which is the Public Works Quarterly Report. Matt, you've been on on a hot seat lot tonight, even though it's not hot, it is.
Well, hopefully, this will, this will go well. So let's see where we go with this. I'm sharing my screen. I'm assuming, once again, everybody can see it. So this is our quarterly report. I chose to focus on some of the project, two, two of the projects we're working on this year, just to give you an update on where we are. In a quick discussion with the mayor, as he walked in the building tonight, we, we talked a little bit about one of them, and this kind of helped me to realize this is probably a good, a good thing to talk about. So as far as we're, what we've done this year, we're on year, we're finalizing the second year of our five-year plan. This was the 2019-2020 budget. We've done a lot of slurry seals around the city. We've done around four million square feet of slurry seal, by far our biggest undertaking so far, and it's probably one of our biggest undertakings in our five-year plan for these surface projects. If you'll recall, looking at this, the projects we're working on are these. I don't know if you can see, you should be able to see the cursor. We're working on these projects, and this was our five-year plan that was, was adopted or approved by the City Council in 2018-2019. Each year as council, you've, so far, you've funded it, and once again, I, I appreciate the fact that you, you've taken this and, and, and realized the importance of it. But due to the COVID-19, just for the residents out there, we did not start the 2019-2020 projects until June, because we held off. Council asked that we hold off a little bit and see where things were going. So these are the projects. We've done about four million square feet, as I'd said. We've done some stormwater improvements and road reconstructions that are going on, and we'll talk real quick about those. In the next fiscal year, this is a map or the layout of the area we will be concentrating on this fiscal year we're in right now. You can see that a lot of projects on the east of Wasatch, and then over here just south of Creek Road area, where we'll be doing, focusing a lot of surfacing projects happening. Let's talk real quick about cer, slurry seals, and I'm getting a lot of questions that are coming in, and I want to make this as a public, make this public as we talk about it, but what is a slurry seal? It's just an emulsion mixture. It is not a structural element. We get, we get a lot of that. People will call us up and say, well, I've seen paving jobs that are a lot smoother. This is not a paving job. It is a slurry job, and I put a picture up here so you can see this. This is the slurry on top of the old asphalt. You can see it's just a, it's, it's an eighth of an inch rock roughly and sand mixed with an emulsion, water and oil, and it's not a structural element. Yes, sir.
Matt, but would you share with the council, how, how many years life does this extend on a road?
Yeah, a slurry seal typically you will get, you'll get about five to seven years, if you don't have a lot of heavy use on it. But you, anywhere about five years is what I would push a slurry seal. And what that is, that's not unusual. When you build a road, once again, you build a road with a life expectancy of twenty-five, thirty years. And about every five years, you need to do some sort of a treatment on it, whether that's a, a seal coating, a crack sealing, or even a thin surface overlay. All of these things happen, because if you wait and don't do this, your price goes from, this is about seventeen cents a square foot. If you don't do it, and you're doing reconstruction, you're going up to about five to seven dollars a square foot. So it is a big deal to do that. So you get about five good years out of a slurry seal as you move along. And what it does, and real quick, we'll talk about it, is it does keep moisture out of the asphalt. It's a preventative maintenance. It fills in small cracks. It does extend the life of the pavement by about five years, as we've talked. And it adds a flexibility to the rigid pavement. When a pavement goes down, it starts sun-drying pretty quick. It just starts to deteriorate the minute you put it down, and it's not, you can't see it, but it is happening. But the slurry seal kind of gives the rigid pavement or the dried-out pavement a little more moisture. So that's the reason for our slurry seals, and we've got a pretty aggressive slurry seal program going on throughout the city. Just wanted to give you a heads up. This is one of our roads right here. This is a crack seal job that we did in preparation for the slurry seal. This is over off 3500 East. But you can see what kind of road you can actually slurry seal. This is a typical treatment. You go ahead of the whole project. This is one of the projects in the city. This is town, no, oh gosh, just across the street here. Now I'm not even thinking of the name of the road.
Town Crest.
Is it Town Crest, right across the street from Highland, off of Bengal? I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the name of the road. My mind is completely going blank. This is a neighborhood we did. You can see the slurry seal. They were working on both sides of the road, and then they came down, and this has eventually been seal-coated. So this is just what it looks like is the project's going down, just so you can kind of get an idea. This is over on Creek Road. This is a final product of the slurry seal. It's bike lanes that were on Creek Road, and you can see the new striping that went along with it, and you can see the surface. This is, somebody left water on or something, and it was running down the road. And moving on, this is back over on the road I just showed you that had the stripe down the middle. You can almost see it right there, but the striping and the bike, and the shared bike lanes that are on the road. And just a couple of pictures of some cul-de-sacs and what it looks like when we're done. So that's, that's what we've done so far. The slurry seal projects are done for the year. That project, we finished that, and we've just, we finished the punch list items, and so we're preparing now for the 2020-2021 projects. I want to talk a little bit about the storm drain. This is actually what Scottish Drive looks like, if you can see that asphalt. Now, Scottish Drive, quite a few years back, was slated for seal coating and slurry seals, and I don't know the history of it. I think it was a budgeting time, a recessionary time, if I recall, from what I'm told. It was pulled off, and this is some of the indication that this wasn't, it didn't have a maintenance program going on with it. So we're in a reconstruction mode on here. A slurry seal would not, or any kind of seal coat would not adhere to this type of roadway. So this is a little bit about Scottish Drive and what we're doing in there. This, we talked this evening about the stormwater. This is just the installation that's going on of the stormwater. These are the new waterways that we're putting in on these products, on these roads. They're new waterways. They do convey more water. They're easier to drive through. A lot of our waterways are narrow right now, and when plows or cars go through them, they go down into a pretty heavy dip, but this allows for movement through there, and we've improved ADA access on this. And in the end, this is what one of the waterways looks like with the new ADA ramps and ability to cross. So that is our quarterly report, outside of the fact that we are doing just our standard maintenance, and we're doing. just our standard maintenance and we're doing our road project, I mean, our right of way work and taking care of those things. Public Works is plugging right along. We've got a handful of projects that we're putting together and engineering that are happening. We held a pre-construction meeting for the East Jordan Canal this week and that I would, I would guess that will be starting here within the next week or two, we'll be begin construction on that project. So are there any questions or comments about where we are?
Nope, you answered the one question I had. So thank you.
A comment, Matt, your slurry, your slurry seal has been phenomenal and almost all of our departments are stellar and you're amongst them. So thanks for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
No, it's good to see some progress when we look at all the things that still need to be done. It's always appropriate to take a moment and see some things that are being done. So I just need to do more of that. So thank you, Matt. All right. Next item is our quarterly report from our common heights, please. Dan, you want to present that to us, please?
Can you all see that?
Yep, we got it.
Okay, this is the quarterly report with the August stats included. If I can get through this. We had 1,494 calls for service with 259 on views for the month of August. You can see June and July's as well. This is our response times for the month of August. With our average total response time of 6:57 for priority one, 10:45 for priority two and 12:24 for priority three. Here's a three month interview, three month review of those response, total response times. Our overall UCR crime report for the month of August and we had 65 total UCR crimes.
Dan, anything that stands out? Any outliers or any unique situations you want to report on?
No, I don't think so. It's business as usual.
Okay.
Our arrest for the month of August.
I think that might be the first time we've had zero on juvenile arrests and that is a little surprising, especially considering it was August.
Yeah, we, so we because this council meeting is at the first of the month, we don't have all of the all of this stuff isn't in yet. We haven't been able to get the whole month in of August. So there is a few stragglers cases that haven't been processed through yet. And so I know it's not at zero. We have a few and on the next quarterly report, you'll see those just when the council meeting falls at the first of the month, it's hard for us to get all those in on time.
All right. I just, yeah, I thought that was.
Total traffic citations. So 97 citations, 61 warnings and five DUIs for the month of August. You can see June and July in there as well. Our accidents.
Sorry, 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 Lieutenant Bart. Look, you go back. I just it seemed like the big spike, 143 down to 97. What do you attribute perhaps that? That spike in July to, do you have any thoughts?
The, the high July?
Because yes, traffic citations, traffic citations, 101, 143 to 97.
We had some, some clicker ticket, traffic campaign, things that we were working on in July. We did a lot of parking enforcement in July, which is why it's so high.
Sorry, can you, I don't know what clicker or ticket means. Sorry.
Seatbelt, seatbelt shifts.
Got it. Thanks. So those weren't necessarily like traffic speeding or things like.
Seatbelt violations are a trap. It's a, that's a traffic violation. That's what I mean, and then the parking ones, of course, that they're all included in that.
Thanks.
35 accidents for the month of August.
You're going really fast. I don't know. You go back down. What's the two to 16? What is that?
That's a property damage like so reportable accidents where there's damage of a certain amount to, to a vehicle or something like that is the, is that graph that you're seeing there. It should I don't know why it shows so low in July because there was more than that July. You should see more, like if we have the 35 accidents for the month and the 16. So the 35 calls for accidents and then the 16 ones with actual reportable damage.
And then for July is 28 and only two, so probably two might be a misnomer.
Oh no, sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. So what this graph on the bottom they show, and those are injury accidents. So when there's a reported injury, that's what you're seeing. I'm sorry.
All right. That's, that was my question. Yeah.
The three months in review for total cases, you can see July goes up for us. Of course, July is always a busy month for us. And then we, I don't have the total for August yet because it's so close to the first of the month. I can't put the August one in fully, but like every year, July is a very high month for us. May and June, pretty steady. And I think you'll see for August about, it'll be about the, you know, August is about the same for us. Back in the 13, 1400 range there. And then our total accidents, DUIs, citations and warnings for the, for those three months. Our animal control and code enforcement, 126 calls for service for the month of August, 24 total citations. They, of course, were up doing the parking enforcement up at the, at the trailhead. And over the last six weeks, we kind of rotated between Saturdays and Sundays. We actually only handed out a couple of tickets during that six weeks. Most people were, were pretty good about having their dogs on leash and their parking and stuff like that. So overall that went pretty well. They are doing a lot of, of parking stuff right now, especially with school being back in and handling those complaints that come in. Our desk for the month. The safety message for this month is national, it's National Preparedness Month. We just wanted to highlight that and make everyone aware. Please, especially with the things that have gone on in the world the last year, really make a plan, build the kit, prepare for disasters and teach your family, those that live with you, your family about preparedness. Any questions?
Yes. Can you go back to, I think your, is it your first slide on response times? I just, is that, is that because we're still working out the kinks? Oh, sorry. Maybe not your, yeah, that one. Can you just maybe put a little bit more color there? I just was surprised.
Sure. From, from the switch over, so you still have calls coming into dispatch that are being populated in, in Spillman and kicked back out. As more and more agencies are coming on to the new versa term and we're about, they're about to start that with fires going right now. You'll see the rest of the police agencies coming on. These will come down. It's just a matter of dispatchers being trained and and learning on, on both systems and navigating through both systems while we're transitioning out of Spillman. The, the, the average officer travel time has been about the same across the board from when we were on Spillman to now. It's just the, the call time is, is a little bit different because it comes in on two different systems.
But the dispatch time, that's through VEC, right?
That's through VEC, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So how, I mean, that makes sense. I think that was my question. I just didn't use the proper term. Sorry. So in, in your, how are you feeling? How much longer do you think until it becomes more seamless? Are you hopeful or are you thinking it's still?
We're very hopeful and we work with them. We talk to them every week and as, as they're getting more and more dispatchers trained and as they're getting more and more confident in, in their, with their knowledge of the system and as Spillman gets phased out, I think, you know, you will see in the next three to six months, the response times being what they were on Spillman and, and back to normal.
Hey, Dan, I had an interesting conversation with a resident who was talking about how unsafe it is that we like the pizza 30 minutes where it's free and how the pizza drivers were running through neighborhoods and the resident was really talking about how our, our police officers just fly down some of these residential roads. I know that for the vast majority, they, they think that response time is what we bought when we bought our own police force, but can you talk to the safety of, of trying to make time, everything?
Well, we don't, like on a priority one call, that's a lights and siren call. And so they're going to go lights and siren. They're going to respond appropriately, you know, accordingly with lights and siren. On priority two or priority three calls, they're not, they're, they're not hurrying that fast because there's no urgency. You know, there's not a huge urgency for us to get there like there would be on a priority one call. We monitor the speed of all of our vehicles. If someone thinks that one of our vehicles is going too fast, they're certainly welcome to call us and we can look it up and see. We want to be safe. We want to observe all the traffic rules and stuff like that. And I, I mean, I'll tell you, having responded to calls, there are times that we get on it. We want to get there, you know, and try to, to, to stop whatever's going on or, or catch, you know, someone in the act of doing things, but when it comes to response times, that's not even something that we go over with the officers. That's something that we we gauge administratively and with VEC. So we're not telling our officers, you've got to get there fast, you've got to get there fast. That's not something we would do. That's not something that we ask them to do.
If you can do that, I, 2500 that evolves into 2700 that goes past the two schools. More than once I've been just walking my dog and seeing officers race down that road with no lights or siren. So if there's a way to spot check, I didn't know we tracked the cars so closely. So that's good to know. Could we take a look at that?
I'd have to have a specific like incident. If you, I mean, you tell me the time and date, I can go back and look at it and we can go back and look at it. Cause we do, we do track all speed and where the, and where the vehicle locations are.
Cool. Okay.
Yeah. And I've reported a couple of those over the years to, to Robbie and they've always been dealt with very timely and with the GPS systems and stuff, that's that's, that's an ability we have. Any other questions of Dan? Dan, just one thing I wanted to mention real quickly. I know I, I attended a training of our police officers last week and just want you to please share with them our appreciation for their continued efforts in, in their training and, and staying on top of best practices during these crazy and emotional times because they're still every day, every night responding to domestic violence accidents and a whole variety of other things. And it's, and I know it's doubly strenuous on them. So my appreciation to them for staying diligent during these times and keeping up on their training and again, staying professional. So appreciate their efforts. All right. Any other, any other comments on the reports? All right. Hearing that, we have two action items. The first one is resolution 2020 dash 41. It's approving appointment to the Arts Council of Tammy Ross. Tim, you want to introduce that?
Yes. As I mentioned in the work session, we had the opportunity to meet with Tammy via Zoom and get to know her a little bit more. She has a passion for the arts and really is looking forward to be on the Arts Council. She has 12 years experience in theater, direct ownership and running the theater in Midvale. And so we think that her, her skills as well as her knowledge in that area will be a great asset to the Arts Council. So I'm recommending approval of her appointment. We look forward if the council approves this for her to participate.
Any questions regarding this proposed resolution? Hearing that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve resolution 2020 dash 40.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Michael, seconded by Councilmember Bruce. Any further questions or comments? Hearing that, I'd call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. The next item is resolution 2020 dash 41, approving entry into an agreement for land use appeals hearing officer services is continuing an existing service with the existing contract that we have. So Mike Johnson, I'd introduce that, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of our contract with Paxton Gaiman. Paxton is a previous city resident and previous planning commissioner. He's also a land use attorney. The appeals hearing officer position is one that considers variances and appeals and, and expansion of non-conforming buildings that are all pretty closely regulated by city and state code. So having a law trained expert to come in and and administer those, those applications is, is very necessary. We have about three to five meetings a year, so he's used sparingly, but, but again, it's, it's important that a hearing officer be well trained and knowledgeable in land use law. So we recommend approval of this.
Any questions, comments on this resolution?
No, I think that has sped that particular process up significantly. So I'd move that we approve resolution 2020 dash 41.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bracken. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Peterson. Any further questions or comments? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Councilmember Michael.
Yes.
Councilmember Bruce.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That is our two action items other than the consent calendar. We have meeting minutes for August 4th, 2020. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve those, Mayor.
It's been moved by Councilmember Peterson. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Michael. All in favor can say aye or give me a thumbs up.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain, Mayor. I don't remember reading them. I'm sorry.
Okay. Then we've got four yeses and Councilmember Bruce has abstained from that vote, so it still passes for the, for the minutes of the record. All right. Any final comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'd move that we adjourn the business meeting. We'll reconvene in two weeks.
It's moved by Councilor Bracken that we adjourn and again, meet in two weeks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, we council approve. All in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed of adjourning? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. These are challenging meetings and appreciate your patience and diligence. So be safe. Good night.
See you next Tuesday.